Okay, I'll follow the meeting to order. Budget allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the party of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. We are a nation, and we are a family, and we are a family of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
President down.
Here.
Vice President Emmerich.
Here.
President Zimmerman.
President.
Secretary Roderick.
Here.
Trustee Lakey.
Excellent.
Trustee Zurich.
Here.
And Trustee Keller.
Here.
Okay. Thank you for all those questions. For a while there, we were wondering if we're gonna have a floor. Okay, public comments. Number one. Anything out there?
You haven't seen any raised hands online.
Maybe nobody in the audience expected it. Okay, next will be this Andy, if you're ready. Your presentation.
I am, my next.
Well, I got.
That's a little further down.
I guess it is presentations, but we don't have any other.
We don't have it, yeah.
Okay. Moving down then. Let's review the regular meeting agenda items. Everybody have any questions on the? If you want to. Uh, was that the agenda? Starts at thirteen point one. And goes on down to. We're seeing eight things, yeah. Okay. It's pretty obvious. On June, we have the minutes of the meeting, previous meetings to approve or accept. Presidents report to accept. Health insurance, everybody was good with that. Usually you drag that way. You're good. Okay. Uh, the bids on the energy, the fuels, they went through five. Very, any comments on it?
As well as expected, yes.
Yeah, good.
They were quite favorable.
Excellent. Tax payments for that we. There's gonna be an authorization to bid on a native seed. That was, it's a big dollar item. And then the professional services agreement, great trail. But it's okay. Yes, if that's the case, no questions, we'll. Move along to. I guess now you're up.
Thanks, John.
Yeah. Do we wanna explain, John, that you're? In place of Elizabeth right now?
Sure, Elizabeth is remote. I'm standing in at least here. I don't know what support I'm giving Christie over here, but I'm supposed to be helping.
A warm body.
I'm supposed to be helping in that. But Andy has a budget presentation, so whenever, and at this point, it's very high level look. It's a very, it's based on a bunch of assumptions and projections. The budgets are not done by any means. We don't start really doing the operating budgets and the real capital budgets. We've been building the capital budgets. We're, we'll start the operating budgets in a month or so, but this gives some guidance to the district, the staff, et cetera, so it's a very high level look at it at this point.
And Elizabeth, you, all good news?
All good news, yes, absolutely, no emergencies. Thank you.
One more, I'm gonna try to work something out ahead.
You might jump ahead to the.
Yeah, let's talk about six point three replacement of the Kennedy House room. I think everybody's going except for saying that the. We remember this year. The Kennedy House is the brick home that's up fourteen years toward Woodstock. On the west side of the road, used to be the Paulson Farm. Was a stagecoach stop back ten years ago. And. We're trying to figure out what its role is in the district and what we're to do with it. But in the meantime, we're trying to figure out about spending money on at least keeping a grown lot.
Falling apart. Yeah, rough caping in, yes.
So. We have estimates on the.
I actually have a figure to share with the Kennedy House, but since Andy just took over the projector, I can't quite put it up yet, so we could do this first and then after.
Perfect.
I'll be able to show that figure.
And you guys are ready?
Yep, we are.
Okay.
Oh. A little longer than normal, of course, it's been a bit of a coffee. We're trying to break this into two presentations, but it just didn't line up. Because the levy discussion's a little bigger this year, obviously, we're looking at the ballot measure. So with that said, the objectives today are gonna be to get understanding of the revenues for fiscal year twenty six, for the fiscal year twenty six budget. And then establish the basic general fund budget guidelines that we do every year. The first one being establishing that twenty four property tax levy. So an operational levy increase to support the general fund needs for the current year. Then also the ballot measure limiting rate increase. Employee wage cost increase, non-personal costs increases, capital spending, and then the use of reserves. So we'll walk through those things. Starting with the revenues, this is the breakdown of the fiscal year twenty six budget revenues as they look today. Not a lot of big changes there, as how it was pretty much for the last decade or more. Other than farm leases come down quite a bit, it used to be over ten percent, it's down to seven. We rely heavily on the property tax revenues. This shows the percentage of the property tax revenues makes up of the total revenue for the general fund operating budget. And you can see it's been eighty percent or more, you know, going back for fifteen years. And twenty three and twenty four started to trend down as some of the other revenues, farm lease and state personal property replacement tax trended up. But as those are gonna go down now as we look at that, then we see it become more and higher again on the property tax level. This shows a history of the PTL levy, you can't see the top title there, I apologize for that, for the last twelve years. And in that, we've only taken the full allowed PTL increase three times. That's the three bars that you see, the three green bars that you see. Those are the three years where the district took a full PTL levy. In fact, in two of those, fifteen and sixteen, the first two on the left, we offset those increases with a debt service levy decrease, so there was no net impact to the taxpayer in two of those three years. The years in red are the years that we either reduced the levy or kept it completely flat. And then it looks like five blue years are the years we took some levy, but not the full one. And for example, in twenty three, the third is far on the right, we only captured seventy three percent of the available property tax revenue in the PTL. We left about a hundred fifty three thousand dollars just in that year on the table. Average annual increase only about one point six percent a year. This shows those levies by year, because you do the actual numbers, again, shows an annual average increase of one point six that the district actually took since two thousand twelve through twenty three. This is what was allowed under PTL, average increase of almost three percent, it's almost double what the district's captured. We've given up ten point two million dollars over that time of tax revenue. And just as importantly, if not more importantly, we've given up a million and a half of annual levy capacity. So, you know, this year, we could be levying a million and a half dollars more than we are today because we gave those up. And that's about half really of what we're looking to basically recapture through a ballot measure. So how do we calculate the PTL levy for the operational levy for twenty four year? Under PTL, you start with a levy from last year of twenty three. It can grow by the rate of inflation from the last calendar year of twenty three, which is three point four percent. Gives us a total increase of three hundred nine thousand dollars. Brings that base levy to nine million four hundred thousand dollars. And then there's a little bit more for new development, and I'll go into that a little more, a couple more slides, but we're estimating that of a hundred and eight thousand added on. So it brings that total increase to four hundred seventeen thousand or four point six percent for the twenty four levy. That would be again collected for fiscal year twenty six. So we know we have a ballot measure which will increase the limiting rate. So what is the limiting rate and how does that relate? Basically, in simple terms, it's just the rate that's needed to cast across EAV to give the district that nine million five hundred eight thousand dollars. And the way it works is the numerator is the prior year's levy plus the inflation we just looked at. And the denominator is simply the EAV less the new development, which is a small portion of it. So we know the numerator is nine million four hundred thousand dollars, that's what we just did a slide ago, last year's levy plus three point four percent. We don't know the denominator, because that's the EAV at the end of this calendar year, twelve thirty one. That will be released probably until March, early April of twenty five. So my estimate, and I'll get into that a little more too, is eleven million nine. I'm estimating a new development, a hundred thirty five thousand, so they backed that out of EAV to come up with eleven million seven sixty eight, and that's the denominator. So you take the nine four, the eleven seven, it gives you this point zero seven nine eight percent for the two thousand twenty four estimate. So that would be the limiting rate for twenty four if nothing else changed. What's interesting about that is that you take that rate, and if you multiply at bad times that denominator to the smaller one, so that's the eleven million nine less new development. You're obviously gonna come back up with a nine million four hundred thousand, which is just the inflationary increase. It doesn't capture new development. So what the clerk does is they take that ratio and they multiply it by the full EAV, the eleven million nine, and then that projects nine million five hundred eight thousand, the difference is a hundred and eight thousand in new development. So that's how they get it, and that's what the limiting rate's about. And that basically represents the amount, the allowed amount of PTL. So looking at the limiting rate increase, the ballot measure would bring that up to point one one percent. So if we had no growth and you took that against the twenty three EAV, that's known, right? That was last year's EAV. The actual limiting rate for twenty three was point zero eight three percent, it generated nine point two million dollars. We had an operational levy increase that we're gonna have this year anyway, right, of four hundred seventeen thousand. And then with that additional amount for the requested limiting rate, we give us an additional two point six million dollars. Impact to three hundred thousand our home, as we all know at this point, is twenty seven dollars. Should the EAV grow to four percent? The limiting rate for twenty three doesn't change, obviously, those numbers are historic, as constant. We would still take the same operational levy. The requested limiting rate is still point one one, but now it's going across a higher EAV. So it's gonna generate three point one million for the district, it's still a twenty seven dollar increase to the homeowner, because your limiting rate's not changing, it's still point one one times the value of the home. I went ahead and ran that out for a seven and ten percent growth as well, and you can see additional revenue grows a couple hundred thousand dollars should the EAV grow by seven percent. Grows a lot if it grows by ten percent, but I'm pretty sure that's not gonna happen, I'm assuming why. So how do we project where the EAV's gonna be, because that's a big part of this? This chart, we haven't, I don't think we looked at in a while, we used to look at it quite a bit when we were more concerned about it as we were approaching the limits, but. The blue line shows the change in the three-year average median home value. And the red line shows the actual change in EAV. So because the Kennedy County's EAV, eighty percent of it consists of residential home values, actually eighty three percent, these two things parallel very, very closely, as you see. And if you look at the blue line on the far right for two thousand twenty three, if you take the average home values of two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty one, you take that average, compare the change to twenty one, to twenty twenty one and twenty two, that equals very closely what the EAV is gonna change for twenty two and twenty three. It's lagged about a year, that's the assessment process, the three-year average, it lags about a year. So if we wanna know what the EAV is gonna do at the end of twelve thirty one, twenty four, we need to know what the home values were for two thousand twenty, twenty one, twenty two, that's historic, we know it. We need to know what they were for twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three, that's historic, we know it, it came out usually late January, we can find it. That change was eight point six percent. So this history shows us that the EAV is gonna change by a very, a very close amount to that, a very similar amount. I'm projecting seven percent. The reason I don't go right to the eight point six is if you look over the last six or seven years, it averages about a one and a half percent difference, one and a half percent difference. So I'm backing that out, and I would project the EAV to be seven percent. I'm pretty confident it's gonna be more than six percent, pretty confident it's gonna be less than nine. I wouldn't be surprised if it falls right in that seven percent range, give or take a half or percent. So if we use that, then that would bring that point one one limiting rate up to three point four million dollars. And again, change the three hundred thousand our homes to just the twenty seven dollars. And remember, we're not gonna collect that right away, right? We're gonna delay the impact until twenty six. And we're doing that through the abatement process, so the way that would look is, this first calculation we're gonna look at is the levy calculation if we did not have any sort of ballot measure increase. So we start with the twenty three limiting rate, we had the PTL increase that we just showed, the four hundred seventeen thousand. We have a debt service levy, right, general obligation, referendum approved bonds of thirteen point eight million. It's gonna bring the total tax levy without any sort of abatement or any sort of ballot measure to twenty three point four million dollars. With the ballot measure, if it's successful, you're gonna have the same twenty three limiting rate, we're gonna have the same PTL levy increase of four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Then the predicted increase would be three point four million. But we're gonna abate that from the debt service. What that means is we're gonna tell the county clerk, the board of commissioners, it says, do not collect three point four million dollars of the thirteen point eight that you'd otherwise collect for debt service. We still have to pay the full thirteen eight, and what we would then use is that increase from the ballot measure to pay the additional debt service. What that'll do is it reduces that service down to ten point three million. It would be, again, the exact same property tax levy whether or about the ballot measure in twenty twenty four. So obviously then no increase to a homeowner based on that, right? The other thing too is we're committed then to doing that again in twenty five. And so in twenty five, we go through this kind of the same exercise, we're abating it again, the debt service will grow. That's just the contractual obligations on the bond by about one point four percent, or three hundred twenty nine thousand dollars. And as we slide over to twenty six, that debt service goes away, the bonds are paid in full, there's no more debt service levy, so it goes from that fourteen million to zero. The total estimated tax levy goes from twenty three point seven million to thirteen million. It's a decrease of ten point seven million or forty five percent. Again, I can't predict this perfectly, give or take. Obviously, as we get to levy year twenty six, should it be a little bit more or less? The board can abate a little bit more or less accordingly to make sure that forty five percent of savings that weren't committed to is locked in. Questions, thoughts?
The abatement process, we had the joint meeting with the foundation on Tuesday. And one of the questions that one of the foundation members asked was, how do we codify or commit to the abatement process?
It'll be, it'll be a separate ordinance that you need to do before the end of February twenty five. So.
Us as a board, you'll have to do that?
Yes, yeah. So we can do it anytime from the time you issue a levy in September up to the end of February. It could probably go a little bit longer, but the county clerk has said, because we've looked at this before, and they said, hey, if you can get into this February, that gives us plenty of time to react to it. But, well, plenty of time, but then we'll know the outcome of everything, so it should be good.
Just seems to me that's coming, what we can make before the.
Trying to be transparent.
Yeah. Could we say? Abatement would occur, you know, today or before November? Pass a resolution that says we'll abate, provided there's a, the referendum passes?
They don't want us to use, as far as I installed, the financial part of it, this pushing the propositions much. And we wanna push it through those three other water.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
Those are the three.
So you have to be careful, I guess, how we explain that. Andy can explain it to you.
Well, I think it's, you know, very documented, the district's very committed, we're gonna abate that increase, right? Whatever, because we just don't know exactly what it's gonna be at this point. We, we have an approximation.
I know what you're saying.
We have a statute requirement to report it a certain way historically, just, you know, for communication purposes, but.
And that's assuming that it goes through.
Correct.
Because if it didn't go through, there wouldn't be.
No, I'm saying you can make it conditional, that the abatement would only occur if the resolution passed, refer.
That's about my favorite. I'm not tricking you. Yeah.
Never mind, just an idea.
Okay. Just one question, Christie, can I get a copy of this email to me? I can't find it on here anywhere.
The, what, Andy's?
Yeah, Andy's presentation.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't put that out in the.
I did something this afternoon, so.
Right, do you?
I understand that, but I'd be great if I could just review a little bit.
Okay, I'm gonna send it to you right now.
Ah, thank you.
I apologize, I didn't get out early this part of the package, but. So hopefully that will end that portion of it. So moving on, I'm not gonna kid all the revenues, just because we'll be here all night, a couple of the big ones, farm leases, makes up seven percent of the, it's the second biggest source of revenue. Currently about four thousand nine hundred total acres, thirty six hundred of crop production, that's generated most of revenue from the ag program. The rest of it's in hay, grass, freezing, some organics. It's driven by the commodity's future price of corn, so all these ag leases have revenues determined by the December's futures of corn. That's that dash line that's showing you where corn was. The green line is the actual amount of revenue the district collected versus the white blue, which is the budget year by year. Interestingly, here, you can see from fiscal year twenty three to twenty four, corn didn't change much, it's five ninety versus five ninety one. Yet the revenue dropped off quite a bit, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I think it was what we budgeted, a little more than that. And that's because we had a grant agreement where we had to pull eight hundred and thirty acres out, the land that was being farmed was purchased with grants. Under the grant agreement, we had to separate that out so that those lands could be restored, that's the concrete watershed. Those dollars have been segregated, just those restorations are no longer part of the general fund. I believe that whole process will be done within the next two to three years, and all those lands will be pulled out and completely restored. So that was that big drop there. And then you see the, you know, corn fell from five ninety one to four sixty six for fiscal year twenty five. As we look at, this shows the actual December's futures going back three years ago. So we sat here in August of twenty two, and we were generating the twenty four budget. We were looking at corn at five ninety six, December's, again, looking out to December's futures. As we brought that forward and locked it in for the budget, it ended up at five ninety one, that was the average February, that would kiss locked in. So pretty close to where it was when we're building that budget. Last year at this time, it was five forty two, as we were looking at it, August of twenty three, building the budget for today, fiscal year twenty five. It went down to five twenty, but in the state, right around that, pretty close, all the way up into December. And then, so we budgeted five twenty, and then in January, it bottomed out, made it average at four sixty six.
It bottomed out, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not done.
Yeah.
So, but we're down today in this budget about a hundred thousand dollars, right? So the fiscal year twenty five budget, the revenue we budgeted is a hundred thousand dollars more than we're gonna collect. Now, today, we're looking at the December twenty five futures, not cash price, so it's a little, little bit better than cash price quarter. But we're trying to predict again where that's gonna be for the average of February twenty five. We don't know, so when I built these summaries on this, four fifty five is kind of what I'm working in the budget, it's down now closer to four forty, but I haven't had a chance to rework that. But I do do three different scenarios, so I'll show you a four seventy five, a four fifty five, and a four dollars. And that was all included in the packages I sent out, where we ran the different scenarios for you, so we'll summarize those pretty quickly. And then, as we look at that for twenty six, you see we're budgeting four fifty five, the revenue down then to seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So a difference budget year over year of a hundred fifty thousand dollar decrease for fiscal year twenty five. Program fees, I'm not gonna dive into a lot, so I'll just give you the summary right now, we're showing hunting, camping, education programs collectively going about ten percent. It's really driven by the education programs, we're growing that just back to the actual amounts we collected for fiscal year twenty four. So it's just getting the budget more in line with what's really happening out there. The other big one is the state personal property replacement tax. So back in seventy nine, when local members could no longer do a private, personal property tax, the state came up with this replacement tax, we have no control of it, it's very, very hard to predict. The other thing is the state does give an estimate, but there's two big problems with it. One is their fiscal year is a lot different than the district's. So their fiscal year twenty five, this month, they haven't come out with it yet, they'll give us an estimate of what they're gonna remit us during their fiscal year. And that estimate, as you can see, that yellow line, just takes us through June of twenty five. So it's only gonna cover three months of our fiscal year twenty six that we'll be budgeting for. So it doesn't do a lot of good. And worse than that, they're really bad at giving any kind of estimate with any accuracy. So the green bar shows the actual amount the state remitted to the district, the blue bar shows what they estimated they're gonna remit. And over the last five years, they've been off by thirty percent on average, so sometimes more, sometimes less. So it doesn't help us a lot. Last year, the Elder and Muesfeld lead came out with a kind of a big report, one of the things they showed is that this personal property retake, replacement tax fund is being, funds from that fund are being diverted by the state for all kinds of other needs. And there's not, doesn't seem to be a lot of control over it, a lot of predictability, but this kind of shows you how much dollars are being pulled out of there and used for other state needs. So that also aids to our inability to kind of predict where it's going. They also came out with last year and basically said, there's gonna be some big reductions, they didn't really give us a percentage, just gave us some general information. So for the twenty five budget for this year, that's the last bar on the left, you'd say a budget of four hundred fifty thousand, which is a lot less than we'd actually collected the year before, fiscal year twenty four. But still more than we budgeted now, based on what we've collected today, and a pretty good history of the same percentage of overtime, I'm projecting we're gonna collect about three hundred eight thousand in this fiscal year event. So budgeting it for next year, I just held that concept the same through a, hopefully it'll grow a little bit like, you know, revenues do, but we'll see. Then looking at all the revenues collectively as a summary, we show them growing fifty five thousand, just a half of a percent. That's really driven by the reduction of barn lease revenue, and then that reduction in state personal property tax revenue. So those are more than offsetting the property tax revenue increase. Under the operating expense side, starting with the other operating, so not personnel, not capital, these are some of the things that make it up. Maintenance, repair, supplies, utilities, fuel, property taxes the district pays, contractual services, legal, nondiscretionary items, most of the things, you know, as we change them or reduce them, they have an impact on our operations. The column highlighted there shows going back to the last sixteen years, the amount that we've let managers grow their budgets for these non-personal expenditures. You see a lot of zeros there, right? So if you look at the very bottom, the total increase, net increase over sixteen years, only four and a half percent versus inflation of thirty eight percent. And this shows, the blue line is what we actually budgeted for those, for those other non-personal expenditures. And the green is what we could have actually budgeted if we allowed those to grow by the rate of inflation. And you can see in twenty five, it's almost the same amount, we're basically budgeting fourteen. It's yearly savings about eight hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty five, because we've been able to control that. And that's how we've offset, one of the big ways we've offset, not collecting the full property tax revenue, right? If you have wages growing and health insurance growing, you don't have revenue growing at the same rate, something's gotta give. This is where they've been able to find the reductions.
Andy, how'd you calculate the green line again?
This is what we told the managers when they build their budgets, this is how much you can grow your budget, so zero percent. So absorb all the inflation in all those years, and two of the years you said you gotta reduce it, right?
The next bar, when was the next one? The green bar.
The one back.
Is it that one?
Back? Back one, back one.
No, sorry, I just, oh, my bad. So if you start in two thousand fourteen, with, once you go back to thirteen, and you grow the other operating expenses by the rate of inflation, that would be the green bar.
Okay.
So if we allow those to grow, you'd be at three point two million versus two point four million right now.
Okay. Thank you.
And you told the cap basis type leaving positions, I think, when they become offended.
Just not doing certain.
This is not personal, they wouldn't be in this, yeah, we'll get to the personal a little bit.
Basically, they're tightening their belts.
A lot.
Doing a lot of stuff, yeah.
And we had, and the board has given some relief the last two years, which, I'll show you in a second. This shows that the actual change of the consumer pricing index, the rate of inflation by year, two thousand twenty four, these are calendar years. I'm putting in kind of a placeholder estimate of three percent. If everybody heard, the Bureau of Labor Statistics announced yesterday, year over year, two point nine percent through the end of July, first time since two thousand and twenty, I believe that it's fallen under three percent, so this could be, you know, a pretty good reasonable number. Again, in twenty three, it went by three point four percent, so that's, it's down significantly. So what we like to do then is allow those non-personal expenditures, again, to grow by three percent. And you can see in the two previous years, the board let it grow by seven percent and three and a half percent, and that's helped a lot. It's helped, you know, alleviate some of the difficulties and challenges staff has had. So three percent is what we've worked in to date on that. Looking at the personnel side. I showed this graph the last couple of years, but the green line shows the percentage of wage increases across the board and economic adjustment. And then the blue line's the change in inflation, and you can see they parallel pretty closely. The district was pretty much keeping in line with inflation of those wage increases. The district was pretty much keeping in line with inflation of those wage increases. As we got to twenty-one and twenty-two, where inflation just took off, obviously, we fell behind with the two and the three percent. Then in the last two years, we did award four, seven, and four versus three point four. And again, that four percent was affected this year, April first of this year. We don't know calendar inflation, but we're guessing three percent. What we've worked into this budget, we're asking for, then is consideration of three and a half percent affected four, one, and twenty-five, starting in fiscal year. As we look at that, all the known changes in the cost of wages, so that's that three and a half percent across the board economic adjustment. If you look at the four, seven, and fifteen practice, where we allow people to move up toward that midpoint and beyond at their seventh year and fifteenth year anniversary, total cost of that on paper would be seventy basis points of seven tenths of one percent. We've eliminated a part-time volunteer coordinator position, so that offsets a lot of it, four tenths of a percent savings. But a lot of new hires coming on, we anticipate at least a three times, four hundred percent savings there. Officers and sergeants under the new contract that we think we'll have an agreement on today, hopefully. Be a little increased, but we had budgeted twenty-five, we just, again, we've done two years without a contract. So it's nice to see it's as close to this, that's not a bigger number. So collectively, all we got there is only three point six percent, just a little bit more than that three point five that we were with that. And as you show that, you know, budget to budget, full-time, part-time season, you see a three point six percent increase to two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Health insurance, so as we went to the board in June, I believe, we had the rates from IDBC is six point four percent, four point six. Then that increase of the rates was five point four percent, or sixty-two thousand dollars. When we do that, I use the same number of lives, the same plan selections, so that we can isolate what is the cost of the rate increase, right? But the thing that we know is those plans and selections don't stay the same year to year, things change. Including employee turnover, merit standards, change in dependence, change in employee health. And again, I'm building the budget at one point in time, and then they go through open enrollment. So our open enrollment isn't until October of this year, so I don't even know that at this point. But what we do know is then, since the fiscal year twenty-five budget, we've had four people stripped from just employee coverage that they took in the twenty-five budget, two more costly insured, which includes one going to employee spouse, and three going to employee plus child. In addition to that, we have one person who had waived in the past, who's now taking family insurance. So a rough estimated cost of that is thirty-five thousand dollars. If we bring that and add it on to that rate increase cost, you're going to have a total year over year, health insurance cost of nine percent, or ninety-seven thousand dollars for twenty-five. But again, only five point four is the rate, the rest is changes in plans and levels of coverage. IMRF rate going down again for the sixth consecutive year, so we see that cost related on three point three percent versus wage going up three point six. Again, investment returns have been strong. But the other thing is the district now has a long period of time within the IMRF pool, so those funds are growing, getting down to the eight percent, that's kind of the average employer required contribution rate. Total benefits then, we see going up six point three percent, budget over budget, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And this is showing the total personnel expense as a percentage of total operating expense. And that green line, that is the total, the bars are breaking down between wages, retirement, and insurance. And as we weren't collecting the full revenue or reducing the other expenditures, we can see that the personnel expenses as a percentage of the total was growing, right, up to twenty-three. And then as we started allowing those non-personal expenditures to grow a bit, that started coming down. Now we see it kind of flat or growing just slightly. Still well under an eighty percent or even eighty-five percent kind of threshold. And if you get those personal expenses approaching eighty-five percent, it gets harder to do all the things you need to do for any government agency, regardless of what service they offer. So a financial summary in general, again, revenue's growing a half of a percent, total personnel growing four point two percent, or three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Other operating going three percent, or seventy-three. We see a net deficit before capital then, for this fiscal year, four hundred and eighty-three thousand versus last year's budget, the budget we're in twenty-five, with a hundred thousand dollar deficit. In the package that went out, we gave you all the detail of the capital. Initially, there were over eight hundred thousand dollars requests. We pared it down to the things that were just, you know, real needs, pared it down to four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Everything's repair and replacement, there's no new additions. It's replacement of three vehicles at two hundred and twenty-five grand. There's six pieces of heavy equipment for a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, that makes up the gist of this. Computer and IT of thirty-three thousand, a couple small facility improvements for sixteen grand for Lickner. And then these other two initiatives that are really grant funded, some of the grants will come in, these initiatives aren't going to happen. But we want them there, you know, so that we have the opportunity, you know, if we can find a next one. So we take that net deficit we showed you before without capital, you bring your capital into that. Fiscal year twenty-five budget, we had one point five million dollar deficit, now we're looking at nine seventy-one. The big difference there is we had a million dollars in capital in the twenty-five budget versus just a half a million for this one. We also had about a half million dollars of reappraisal in twenty-five. Because we've got all the vehicles, it doesn't look like there'll be a need for any reappraisal at this point in time for twenty-six. And then as we project the reserves forward then, we anticipate going down to thirty-one percent at the end of fiscal year twenty-six. That includes funding the capital asset management plan. So outside of this budget for our new trustees, we have a capital asset management plan fund that takes care of the big capital projects, replacements of parking lots, roads and trails, things that fall outside of the normal annual needs of the general fund. They're usually twenty-five thousand dollars or more. There is no funding in that fund anymore, there's no revenue stream coming in. And the funds that were there were expended last year, full, so last year and this year, we're taking unrestricted general fund reserves and using that to fund those big capital projects. And again, this anticipates that, including that expenditure of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'd still be at thirty-one percent. So just a couple more slides. We're going to project one more year out to fiscal year twenty-seven, because we don't get any bailment relief until twenty-eight, right? So just to make sure things are going to look okay, the assumption's then, going out that second year, this year, we take the full levy at four point six. I'm assuming inflation's going to continue downward, so full levy's only going to mean three and a half percent in twenty-seven, fiscal year twenty-seven. We show three corn scenarios, four seventy-five, four fifty-five, and four. I'm taking that state PPR tax of three oh eight for twenty-six, I grow it by three percent for twenty-seven. Across-the-board adjustment for twenty-seven, only three percent, again, as inflation trumps down. Non-personal expenditures are left at three, health insurance brought down to five. We can do that, we've done it many times, it's conservative number, but that's what we're projecting with. Capital outlays, I'm growing the twenty-six number by three percent. And then to project the reserves, on average over the last five years, about four percent of expenditures that don't get spent out, whether it's capital, whatever, buying cheaper things. So I'm adding that four percent back in to the reserve projections. That's consistent with what I've done for the last five or six years I project forward. So looking at the first, more moderate, four fifty-five corn, we see the two deficits, and then a million and a half of the camp spend, seven fifty a year. So a total spend over those two years reserved of three point six million dollars. We would still have that two point one at the end of three thirty-one oh seven, or seventeen percent. And that's about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars above the two-month reserve, which is kind of the temporary threshold we're using, or sixteen point six percent.
Good to know.
It's kind of happened. If corn's at four seventy-five, then obviously you're going to have a little bit more revenue generated. We see the reserve at two point two million, so about seventy thousand dollars higher, eighteen four percent reserve ratio, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollar cushion there. And then lastly, if corn goes down to four, which seems more likely now than it did two weeks ago.
It's going to be below four.
And again, this is the summer future, so it's always going to be a margin there. But then we see us getting right down to that threshold, even a little bit below sixteen point six percent. And again, a lot of variables, a lot of things can change, that's just something. But all in all, I think, you know, the plan that we have, sustain the dream, to use those reserves, I think it looks good. And this, proposing for assumptions, it's good for twenty-six. So what we're looking for tonight, to wrap it up, is a consensus. An operational levy increase of four point six percent, that's less than the last two years. We've had like four nines, I think, in those couple of years. And then again, the consensus to go forward would be point one one percent of the limiting rate, which I think is kind of a no-brainer, we're on that path, right? We will have to go public hearing because of the referendum, or because of that bailment, we're going to have a bigger levy request, so it'll be over five percent, so a public hearing on it. And then we're looking for that consensus to have an economic wage increase of three point five percent across the board. Non-personal cost increase of three percent. We need that direction, really by eight twenty, by the board meeting, because we need to give our staff direction so they can get their budgets done and back to us in time to review everything. Capital spending of forty-eight, I have a plus at question mark, four months into the fiscal year. There's a good chance some things are going to show up between now and then. We bring them forward to, obviously, in November, end of December, if they come up. But that should be close to that number, but it gives us some room to work. And then a reserve spend of nine seventy-one, again, the reason that might be more is if there's some more capital items that are really critical that come up that we need to stick in it. So I open that to the trustees then for discussion to make sure we have that consensus with the board.
Oh, the fire hose of finance.
Yes.
It's hard to agree.
It's a lot of something through that, I see.
I know, it is. Yeah, I really wanted to do the levy of myself as a separate, you know, presentation, it's been easier to digest it.
Well, it seems well thought out. The assumptions you've been using have been pretty consistent in terms of being right, so.
Yeah, and it's going to be very similar to the twenty-five budget, I mean, there's not any big changes going on there, so.
Right.
But really, the biggest thing we're proving, which we approved and we did the plan three years ago, is continue to use the reserves to fund, because we don't have the revenue.
Right.
So we have that revenue base.
No, or is there anything that you think could?
No, but you said something earlier in the presentation about the prior levy increases, and we never took the full levy. I'm just, maybe you can explain a little bit. You said like there was ten million that was left on the table.
I can explain a little bit on that, too, is the previous boards were getting some outside pressures of, you know, our. So previous board members thought it was appropriate, you know, keep those down.
So we're good students of the public finances, by now, they sold the full amount.
Correct.
Okay.
But where did the money go?
Reception. When we don't take it, it.
It stays.
But, but doesn't the taxpayer, I mean, it's going to show up on their tax bill.
No, no. It stays in the taxpayer's pocket.
Oh, they never collect.
It never gets charged.
It never gets charged, okay, okay.
So, well, not to say like this, but so this map shows the only three years where we took the full amount allowed under PETA are the greens of two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and twenty-one. All the other years, we either took a fraction of the allowed increase, or no increase, or reduced the levy. And again, the red bars show the quarters reduced it. So if you take that, what we could have captured and didn't, that equals the ten point two million. So, yeah, we didn't get ten point two million, and the residents got to keep ten point two.
Okay.
Because nobody.
Okay, I thought it meant it was something.
No, but I do think that's going to help us in this.
Yeah, for sure.
Position. People know we worked hard to keep costs down, or at least that's what we can tell them.
The other chart that you guys probably haven't seen yet is historically going back, it'll show the number of acres that we manage, if the staffing stayed almost the same. So that's productivity increase.
Elizabeth has her hand up, so I was raising it for her, somebody can raise it in the room.
Good.
No, I think you're, thank you, you're bringing up some very important parts. And I want to say that the Board of Trustees, year over year, when they go forward to put the levy and the budget together, have really focused on that we had gone to the voters, we had received their support, we were growing to preserve and protect, and then managing and making some difficult decisions. And so I do think it positions us very well. We have been excellent fiscal stewards of the resources in the county. And now, again, looking to go forward is to be able to take care of the assets that belong to the county, making sure that our water quality, that our wildlife habitat in these outdoor recreational access areas are taken care of, and that we protect these areas for use, and that's the responsible thing to do. And that's exactly why the question is in front of everyone this November. So again, Andy, great job on the budget presentation and great questions that everybody's asking. Thank you.
Any other questions, anybody?
You know, I just have one, and it's just out of naivety. We're looking to approve this, you are looking to approve this.
Well, consensus.
Consensus to approve. And you're just bringing it today, is there any reason why there's not like a month or two to digest this, and you're still in four days? Which your presentation against a concession to move forward with it? I mean, like, I just got a copy on my computer a few minutes ago, is that normal? I mean, and I don't mean to be hysterical, I was just, just a question, why is there not time to digest it?
Well, there's, there's actually lots of time, so what this does is it allows us to start building kind of our tentative budget.
Before we do go.
Well, we'll come back to the board in November with a preliminary budget based on these consensuses, right? And it's ninety-five percent of the actual budget. And at that point, they have it all in front of them, they can look through it all, make changes wherever they do. Our tentative budget will get improved until January. So from November to January, there's time to make any change. They want, if they looked at something today and said three and a half percent, no, we're not, or, you know, it's not, we're not going to do it.
That really does help a lot, and especially knowing that by November, you already have a lot more information than you needed to move forward.
Absolutely, yeah. And the only thing we're really looking for now is that three percent, so these guys can start building that tentative budget, so we have something to present November. If we don't know the non-personal, what they can grow by, we can't tell the managers what to do with the budgets. So that's the one that's.
That really helped a lot, thank you.
Anything else?
So the consensus we want to have is just to give staff a tool to start working on, the mold that. Do we have the census? Are you good with it?
Very good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay.
I would abstain until next week. I'd want to go through the presentation all the more myself. You guys?
Yeah, I think we'll talk about it on Tuesday, but.
I would encourage everybody, you too, John, to look at the financial report. There's a long narrative, twelve pages, that kind of supports all this, so I'll be kind of put it together. Because the slides by themselves don't have a lot of narrative, obviously.
No, but you do a great job of explaining, so appreciate it.
But as you go back and look at it, that part of the board has that, you know, a lot of this information, the narrative to explain it.
Yeah, that helps, right. Probably the best presentation I've seen today, Andy.
And by all means, you get to diving into that presentation, especially we have a lot of new trustees, and you don't understand something, give Andy a call, he'll walk you right through it, what it is to help you understand. It's a lot of information, it's very complicated. I've heard him do it dozens of times, and I still pick up something every time he presents, so.
They will be sent to us then?
Excuse me?
They will be sent to the board?
Yes, we'll have the available presentation.
I'll send it out.
We'll get it out to you.
I'll send it out to it.
And go over it, please, because like I said, if you have a question, Andy's happy to help.
I just wondered about that electric off-road motorcycle, will we get a tour of that? I mean, do you give rides to the board?
You can take it back to see the bikes.
Good, okay. Moving along to the reference, there's a Kennedy House.
Yeah, I think we have a picture up here. I knew a lot of people probably were not familiar with it, so we figured we'd throw a slide up. This is a slide of the presentation that Jen Oliver in our planning department and Amy Peters in our planning department put together. So this is the subject house we're talking about. And Chris introduced it a half an hour ago about, it does have historical, some historical significance. It was identified and placked by the Historical Society a number of years ago. It has never been, it's never been planned as a master plan. I think Chris used a term we really didn't have a use for, we don't have a planned use there. And that's one of the reasons that we thought it's important to bring to the board and say, do we invest in this house? And that's one of the reasons that uh we thought it's important to bring to the board and say, do we invest in this house? Uh, the the staff's perspective, it had a a leak in the roof last year, uh, which we patched. We were able to get patched and had a contractor go up and do a little patchwork, which held it together here, but um. The recommendation from staff is if the board wants to see this house preserved, we really do need to get a roof on it. And the timing is critical at this point because if we're gonna get a roof on it, we would like to get it done before the snow flies. So we really need a a kind of a, if if you want us to do it, we need to roll down or we need to roll sometime in the next few weeks on it, so.
I might add that it is in the uh budget also, uh, for allowed uh about thirty thousand in that roof placement in the budget. Cost for the shingles, they have a a bid for about thirteen thousand two twenty six on it, but there'll be some additional costs with. The shingles.
Shooting and everything, yeah, right. And that's that's an uh uh architectural asphalt story, is it?
Uh, base cost for it, I'm not sure.
It was, it's an asphalt shingle, yeah.
Asphalt.
And that'll, that'll. That'll buy us fifteen years easy to come up with a decision on it, so.
Right, it's a nice building.
We're sort of kicking the the can down the road, but we're trying to at least preserve it as much as we can until we decide. Or some future board will decide what to do with it.
I thought it's ours, you know, we own it. Granted, we don't know what we're gonna do with it yet, but. We have, first, we're responsible for it. So we're responsible for it. Let's keep it in, you know.
Go repair.
Yeah, and not let it get worse off, um, which which will happen if we don't repair it, so.
Well, if we don't repair it now, you're saying it may not be repairable or the costs are gonna.
Those costs.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the worst thing you can do on a building is allow the roof to leak and then and that goes back in a hurry. Um, and right now we're in a stasis, you know, we we were able to do whatever little bit of patching last year needed to be done, but the the contractor did say, look at. It's time. And two years ago, we had a contractor look at the same thing and that contractor said. Uh, within two years, you need to be replacing it. So it's very consistent. It was a different contractor, totally different contractor, so.
So if we put a roof on, what's the next step then? Um, are there another board decision in fifteen years of kicking it again or?
Possibly.
And that's, that's.
I just, I can't see spending taxpayer money on something that we don't have a plan for.
That's why we're putting it in front of you.
Yeah, there's a, there's a discussion.
Well, we, yeah, didn't we have a discussion last time about forming a subcommittee to determine if we went ahead, just. How it is, we can use it or can it generate revenue or?
I thought you were wrong. Well, yeah, we did sort of have a uh a group team with the um. So we're, we're uh. Historical? Historical, yeah, thank you. Uh, Lloyd and I were on that group. So we have been meeting along with Elizabeth uh. With some different groups trying to generate interest or anything. We had a meeting earlier today with the McConnell Group on. We have a similar.
Oh, and that's the the home over enrichment?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And uh. So, yeah, we're working up, but there's, you know, it takes time. We don't have a.
You know, and Sean certainly, I mean. The conservation department has a little bit of, you know, um, responsibility for a historical plaque building. To to keep it alive and give it a use that'll that'll. Be of use to McHenry County in some way, I I think. I mean, if that were just a typical building, but it's not.
No, I don't.
It reminds me of recovery. If we let that go, it's just a sin. You know, I'm talking about that Harvard House in in Harvard, uh, the Coventry House. It's a building that kind of looks like that and they just let it go because. And and as a board member, didn't want to spend the money either, but I'm watching that thing fall apart and it's just a sin. It's over by the overall building. On fourteen hours. Yeah, it's just, it's just, it's terrible. It's like tear the damn thing down or 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 fix it, you know? But I mean, there's certainly somebody that can use that building, um, like discover McHenry County or something.
Then I'd rather see it go to a place that can, right?
Well, you can't, you can't let go. But I mean, you certainly could let somebody good.
Well, that's what we're trying to, we're buying time by putting a roof on.
Yeah.
I know, but it's money that could definitely be used in other aspects, so.
Well, like what we do, that's our core.
That's our mission, yeah.
Yeah, it's fair, I can hear your feedback. I thought too. John, didn't you, wasn't there a discussion about the cost to tear it down? It's more than the cost to put a roof on it?
Yeah, that's uh sticks in my head. I can't remember the number.
Pretty close.
Did someone say seventy K or?
No, that was another uh building, I think, yeah.
Yeah, well, if if we applied what was, what it costs to tear down a, you know, really large, complicated building. Uh, and applied it to this, it was, yeah, it was substantial, but this would probably be a lot easier to take down, but.
That's initially though, right?
What do you mean?
I mean, initial cost. If you're just gonna compare today for today.
Yeah.
But say you put a roof on it and we still don't do anything with it for ten years, you gotta project those extra costs then towards.
We go up.
That's fair enough, right? Yeah, I think you're gonna get closer to an equal value.
Yeah.
Right. If we don't have.
Yeah. Well, we're here to agree to disagree, so I mean, we'll take the consensus and the jelly rules.
Have we, have we ever thought about maybe leasing it out to someone that? Could probably rehab it and do like a long-term agreement? I mean, I could see this, a B and B, a spa, it's got four axes, but you could. I mean, people are looking for places to get away all the time and it's got that Galena vibe going.
It does.
And, you know, I don't know if you heard, yeah, but they got that military hospital, which someone is now renovating, but then he's putting cottages around it, but. Um.
We have looked at a lot of those. We've met with some historical uh groups trying to get some interest and uh. Just haven't hit the right one at this point. Uh, the interest and egress of the property isn't the best. For a lot of public use.
Okay, so we got the plane like a lot or?
Yeah, the driveway is not much uh to get it out of there, but.
Well, we've not done none of ours. We haven't marketed it. We haven't done any of that, so that's why I'm saying, let's just buy time, you know.
I agree. And and I think there's funds, like, I don't know about, you know, maybe getting Illinois. I don't know the significance of the Kennedy Station, but. I think with Illinois has funds that they, I know Galena uses them all the time to renovate those beautiful, you know, granted, General Brand live there and all that, but. I just know there is, there is those opportunities out there to make this into something. I could easily see somebody leasing this for something.
Being in the business of their B B, you know, that kind of thing.
No, I know, but.
Yeah, someone else could, but.
No, no, but I have to say we leave it and then they run it. We have nothing to do with it and we just sit back and collect and then it's their obligation to keep it up.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be a triple not lease.
Those are some thoughts that we've run by and we just haven't gotten.
Okay.
And further at this point, so. I guess uh. Anyway, what do you think, Mike?
So there's been no speculation, um, anything other than ideas that have been put around for using this property? And how long has Conservation had this property?
We purchased it, I believe. Maybe two thousand and two, three, something like that. Ed, does that ring a bell?
Yeah, it was part of a much larger acquisition and the owner would not cut the house out there.
And for about. I'm going to say probably ten to twelve years, we actually had a staff resident live in it. And when they vacated, it was at a point where it needed, we knew it needed significant work, so we didn't put anybody back into it. And so it's been sitting since.
And Johnny, I was gonna say, one of the things too is is been brought up is the ability for us to shop this out. It's just a matter of organizational capacity of staff's resources and time. And we've been limited on taking care of, you know, actionable items or things and haven't really had the time to explore that, but I think. That's been discussed. If it was to get a roof, then that would be the next steps, hopefully with having resources, time. To begin to focus on this if it became a priority of the board.
I I don't know if it would be a priority for the board, but at least it's a project that people will get. But explain anything to your life there?
Yeah, I mean. I know.
This was.
Right.
Sean's right, our mission isn't uh.
I do like Sean's point though, it's like, is spending taxpayer money on something that we don't. I know we're buying time, but we're not. Spending money on something we don't even have a plan for buying time.
Right, but it is, it is historic. They'll never.
I I I I like that part of it, but. And we we do have that responsibility to, I mean, since we bought, since we ended up buying it, we could not get out of not buying that piece. Then we are kind of responsible for it.
Right. All right, I'll just go around the room.
Uh, it's a motion.
Do we need a motion?
Uh, I'll I'll move to approve uh funding to replace the roof for our fund, uh, up to twenty thousand now.
Call second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. The roll call, please.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Secretary Wazor.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
No.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
And President Don.
Yes.
And Vice President Everard.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
No, you do. I usually, you you made the motions, I usually do last. You're good.
Okay, uh, motion carries.
Well, uh, we'll follow the purchasing policy and get additional quotes and move forward with it, so.
They put some of the better.
Well, yeah, we'll get a refund, so that's, that's good. Getting in the board.
All right, Elizabeth, you have anything to just say?
Yeah, just a few, a few things to remind the board on. Um, one, just want to say that we've had a very successful summer with programs and camps and this week, it's back to school. For those that have kids know this very well. Um, but uh, so that's finishing and wrapping up. We have a hike with Mike on Saturday at Elizabeth Lake, uh, so if you can join us, please do so. Um, we also are beginning our outreach as we discussed on uh Tuesday night with the foundation. Uh, communication has been sent out. To groups and we'll begin organizing and taking uh our informational fact sharing on the road. Um, we submitted a project application to the Illinois Association of Park Districts for Best of the Best with our partnership with the Bison. At the Pleasant Valley Conservation Area and the positive impact it's having on our soils and water. So uh we look forward to uh seeing if we're successful with that. And again, just a reminder, um, early voting does begin on September twenty sixth for the November fifth. Election, so we're just uh moving full force. I think that's our focus between now. And November is making sure that everybody has factual information about the. The proposition on the limiting rate increase. And that is all I have. But John, did you have anything on you for you?
Uh, a couple of items. We had the fair. I don't know that you mentioned that. Um, I talked with um Becky Lambert. Uh, she coordinated that in our education department. And then we're like, we had touch base with about thirteen hundred people, so um, somebody, I think it was Becky, came up with a little spinner. Idea for the kids to come spin something and win a prize, a little chop ski. Holy cow, you just couldn't beat them off. I mean, they would have to bet any lines.
I witnessed that.
Yeah, you could see that. It was really, really cool. So uh, it was a, it was a fun time. Everybody got to spend time. It was a lot of fun. Uh, and there were thirteen, you know, touch base with thirteen hundred people. That's pretty effective, so. Uh, and the second one was that uh landscape architect, Jen Oliver, and I did present to. Um, the, a consortium, uh, the, the Historic Preservation Commission, which is a commission with the county. Tried to bring together all of the different uh historical groups that are in the county from all corners and there were probably about twenty five people there. Uh, or more, and they were all representing. I mean, you have Woodstock, you had Elgonck, when you had uh Richmond, you had uh. Someone from the Railroad Museum was there, uh, Harvard was there. Um, and I'm missing a bunch of them, but almost every town we knew was was in in the audience. And Jen presented that same presentation that some of the trustees that were here got to see it about six months ago. Uh, it had been updated. Uh, she and Amy worked together and updated it with some of the new information, but it was well received. Um, the valid initiative did come up as a question and so I got a chance to address that with them and uh. And send uh, send them off with some information, uh, little little cards. Uh, so it was a very good presentation.
Good. Do we want to wait till Tuesday to bring up something about the uh McDot presentation that we?
The what?
The McDot. Partnership.
Partnership.
O'Valley.
O'Valley, oh, um, it's up to you. You can, you're you're welcome to queue that out.
No, we'll wait.
Okay, good on.
All right. Public comments number two, please. Out there.
Not seen any rave hands online.
Okay. All right, I guess what we'll do then is we'll leave a motion to go into executive session. And uh, after we convene, we'll adjourn, so.
Make a motion to go on executive session. Second.
The move to seconded.
Trustee Deller.
Yeah.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Secretary Wazor.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
And President Don.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll get switched over to that. People are all coming. Nice presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Gotta do roll call. President Don.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Present.
Secretary Wazor.
Here.
Trustee Zerri.
Here.
And Trustee Deller.
Here.
Okay. Motion. Now we need a motion to adjourn.
Correct.
A motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Right, uh, Trustee Deller.
Yeah.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Secretary Wazor.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes, adjourn.